We'll call this meeting of the Galt City Council to order. We're returning from closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Council's in closed session this evening on two existing litigation matters and there's no action to report.
Thank you. So we will now convene an open session. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne. Councilmember Hewer. Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Powers.
Here.
If you could all rise for a silent prayer, after which we'll have a flag salute by Boy Scout Troop 119's Venture Scouts. Kelly guard forward march. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Kelly guard, post colors. Kelly guard, reform. Kelly guard, dismiss.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, March 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 5th at 9:00 a.m. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions from council? Seeing that, we'll move on to our presentations. First off, introduction of new employees, Finance Department and Public Works.
Mayor, I'd like to, we have two introductions this evening. I'll be the first one. Our Finance Director, and the second one will be done by Mr. Winkler in the Public Works Department. I'd like to introduce Emily Boyd, our interim Finance Director for the city. She comes to us from the city of Crescent City as the Finance Director there, and she has 15 years of experience working with local government, worked in several different cities here in the area, Director in the town of Moraga, also worked in the city of Orlando, Perkylies, and Lincoln. She has a bachelor's degree with emphasis in accounting, and she's worked on a variety of projects and has quite a bit of experience in kind of all aspects of the finance field and running a finance department. So I'm very pleased that she's here working with us, and I think she's very excited to be here.
Awesome. Welcome, Emily.
Welcome, Emily. I'm very glad to be here this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to announce or introduce three new employees tonight, and we just added two in the last week to the rolls, so I thought we'd get them in their first opportunity. So I'd like to ask Martina Biondo, Blanca Velasquez Garcia, and Rodney Tate, if they could maybe just step up so it can be recognized. I'll do ladies first. Martina, wave at us so we know who's who. Martina was hired earlier last year, late last year, as a temporary in our janitorial staff of facilities maintenance, and has shown herself to be very capable, and we just recently promoted her to part-time, and wanted to introduce some of the new faces to you. She's a newcomer to California, just been here a couple of years, has two grown adult male children, and she loves animals, and she likes gardening, fishing, and the coast, so maybe Crescent City would... Also, she enjoys researching her Irish Sicilian heritage and freelance proofreading. I'm not sure what that even means. So, anyway, again, we welcome Martina, and when we're done, if anyone of you wants to say hi or something, I'll let you, but I'll just continue. Blanca Velasquez Garcia was also hired as a temporary janitor late last year in early December, and was also just promoted this past month to part-time. And she's a Galt native, I don't know if you were born here, but she was raised here, and she and her husband bought a house and are raising three children under the age of 11 here in Galt. She's been a stay-at-home mom for the past few years, and had been a yard supervisor at River Oaks School, and then got the opportunity to sign on with the city, and we welcome her aboard as well. And lastly, Rodney Tate, he'd been working with us since November of last year. He came on as a part-time maintenance worker at our Utilities and Wastewater Division, and has shown himself very capable, and was just recently promoted in January to plant maintenance mechanic full-time. So, he has experience in residential and commercial plumbing, industrial mechanics, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and electrical and other miscellaneous maintenance, and has already obtained in his short time with us, maybe he brought a couple in with him, but he has gotten certificates in water distribution and sewage collection systems, as well as small plant wastewater operation certificates. So, he's well on his way, and we welcome Rodney to our team as well. So, anything any of you would like to say?
Awesome. Welcome aboard. Moving on to our next presentation is water usage and water conservation options for city facilities.
I'm going to step to the podium so I can make a little better eye contact as we present and with the audience as well. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council members. This presentation is intended to provide you with an update on how we're doing here in Galt on meeting the current state water conservation mandates, and we'll also briefly review how we're doing at city facilities, in addition to citywide, and how we're measuring up to the mandate, and we'll discuss some potential conservation enhancements that we might be proposing at city facilities. And finally, we'll provide a brief overview of some current water demand issues, and the city's water supply outlook, and emergency and emerging issues likely to impact the city's water system over the next few years. So this slide, I won't read all these bullets, but this slide is sort of a brief history of unprecedented action in the last two years. Here in California, we've had multiple, Governor has declared multiple drought emergency declarations, and has issued three executive orders in the past two years, which resulted in the Water Board adopting and amending twice emergency regulations related to water conservation and requirements. And notably, in May of 2015, this past year, was the second amended emergency regulations coming out of the Water Board, and that's when we were put under the mandate as each agency or water distribution agency in the state was given a specific conservation goal, and Galt was, as you may recall, 32%. Recently, just this past month, well, actually in November, the Governor issued a new executive order calling for an extension of those mandates, which were set to expire last month. And early in February, the Water Board adopted the most recent regulations, which now extends the current mandates with some minor amendments through October at the end of this coming year. And the new regulations also are calling for, are allowing for some minor adjustments on a regional or agency-wide basis related to climates, and initially it was sort of one-size-fits-all, and based on your per capita usage, you had to meet certain target reductions. Now, they're giving some credit for those who live in the more arid or hotter, drier climates versus those who might live on the coast where there's more precipitation or in the mountains. And they're also now allowing, and we're still looking into whether we'll qualify if we've had significant growth since 2013, that allow us to factor that in, won't count that against us. So we might maybe be looking at maybe another percent or two, but as of right now, our new goal going forward, starting in March, will be 29% instead of the prior 32%. And we'll certainly pursue additional reductions if we can qualify for them.
Steve, what's our current level that we're at right now?
32%.
So we're at 32?
Well, so, that's, this next slide is showing where we've been for the past two years, and we are currently meeting and achieving, and have been right on the line for the last few months, meeting 32% goals citywide. On this graph, the blue line represents actual water produced on a monthly basis for the past two years. Then the yellow line would actually, or gold line in this case, would be if we took the 2013 base year and applied 32%, and just looked at what that would look like over the past two years. That's showing, and as you can see, starting in April of this past year, the goal is to have the blue line below, ader below the gold line, and we've done a good job. The new 32% mandates became effective in June of this past year, and we were already below the target at that point in time. So, we've been nip and tuck here as we go into the winter months. In fact, we just recently got the January numbers, and we're a tick above, but we cumulatively saved enough in the prior four months to offset that. Now we'll get a little bit of relief going forward at the 29% level. So how are we doing at city facilities? Just carving out all of the city parks and community centers, and City Hall, and Police Department, and Public Works, and the various complexes that we operate. And we've kind of broken down into two categories, city buildings, including park bathrooms and the like, where there's structures, and we've achieved for the entire year, all of 2015, we've met a 38.6 reduction over the 2013 base year. Then we looked at all of our irrigation, which included parks and all of the city-maintained landscaping, and the lighting landscape districts included in that. And we've fallen a little short in the irrigation sector at about 30%, but as you can see overall, for total combined usage, we are meeting and exceeding the 32% mandate fairly, but that's for the entire year, not just from June forward. So, I'd like to briefly look at the history of water usage in Galt, and as you can see, going back all the way to 2000, we were seeing steady growth long before I arrived here in beautiful Galt, but it peaked in 2007, and as you may recall, that's when we start to see a statewide and national recession hit. And so that's probably due to the drop-off in business usage, and probably some vacant homes and foreclosed homes. So there was a dip through the years 2008 through 2012, but we had actually recovered in 2013 to virtually the same level that we peaked in 2007. But more importantly, if you look at 2015, we are below the level that the city was at in total water consumption clear back 15 years to 2000, and that's obviously a result of two years of efforts to conserve water. And kudos to our community and to our residents and businesses for helping us achieve those milestones. Now, just to perspective, in 2015, which is the lowest in 15 years of total water production, we still produced and consumed well over a billion gallons citywide. That's a lot of work, and so you can imagine what cities like Sacramento, Elk Grove, and San Francisco are using. Of that, 69 million gallons were used by city facilities, which represents just over 5% of the citywide total, and as you saw earlier, a large percentage of that goes to irrigation in this case. Roughly 27% is going to our buildings and facilities such as bathrooms, and approximately three-quarters is going to irrigation uses within the city. And that actually mirrors pretty closely what you'll see in residential, where anywhere from a quarter to a third of the usage is in the walls, we call it, or inside the house usage, and the bulk typically, two-thirds to three-quarters is outdoor irrigation, particularly during the summer months. This is an excerpt I've plagiarized from the DWR website, and I've just truncated it to look at Northern California, and they track key reservoirs that provide, do the heavy lifting for water storage and surface water availability for both domestic use and agricultural use statewide, including the half of the picture that I cut off, a lot of it heads south, obviously. In the blue for each reservoir that's shown, that's current status as of last Friday. The red line up in, typically up in the yellow portion, is where we should be on a long-term historical average this time of year. So as of February 25th, obviously, most of the key reservoirs serving Northern California are well below where they should be on a historical average this time of year. And the yellow is full capacity, so you can kind of see where we're at relative to maximum capacity in those reservoirs. And only one of the major key Central Valley water supply reservoirs serving Northern California is at where it should be historically, and that's Folsom. And being a rather small reservoir on a large watershed, those heavy December rains really brought it up rapidly, but then we had a month of very little rainfall. We're knocking on wood, next weekend, we're going to see some significant rains coming through, particularly up in the Sierras to build a snowpack. And I understand today, I haven't heard the report yet, usually by this time I'll listen to the news, and we'll get an update on, they were up doing the March 1st snowpack survey. As of last month, they were falling below where they would hope to be as far as average for year-to-date, and we'll see. The concern is they would really need 150% of normal to really declare the drought to be over. So, our water system currently consists of eight active wells, and another of other wells that are on emergency standby only if needed, typically because they have poorer quality water or don't have filtration to the level that we like to see on a permanent basis. Of those eight wells, the city has invested significantly in rehabilitating five of those, and we have another one that will be, is proposed in the coming year. So six of the eight prime producers for the city will have been fully rehabilitated going forward, and that places us well positioned to know that even if aquifer firs were to come under stress, that we've got good pumping capacity. We have five water treatment plants that serve those eight active wells, and they provide disinfection and iron magnes and arsenic removal as needed. You are probably aware of the New Heights, New Golden Heights Deepwell, that was the one that had some warranty issues here about a year and a half ago. It is back in full production and has been operating as the lead workhorse citywide since its refurbishment under warranty by the contractor, and is currently providing 80% of all the water being consumed in the city during this off-peak winter period. It's capable of losing almost 2,000 gallons a minute, and that is about 80% of our daily demand right now. We are running other wells to keep them exercise and fresh, but we're letting the Golden Heights well, while it's under warranty, do the heavy lifting, plus it has better water quality coming from that deeper aquifer, which in turn allows us to save some money on water treatment. So what's going on with our aquifers, and now that we're in year five of an extended drought? Over the past three years, we've been monitoring quarterly all of our well sites, and looking at where we were three years ago, over the past three years, and averaging sort of, some are a little more drawdown, some are, some have actually recharged some because they've been getting a rest. When you average those across all eight wells that are active, we've only lost about two feet in three years, which is negligible compared to what typically a stressed aquifer meeting a municipal demand often will see 10, 20, 30 feet often in one summer, if you've got a lot of agricultural demands on the aquifer as well. We've also completed installation of new smart meters citywide, and they are beginning to show benefits to us. Part of helping us meet the water conservation targets is that we've got some real-time leak detection tools now, and we've been sending out hundreds of notices on a monthly basis as we see potential for leak. Well, how would we know? How would the meter know? Well, the meter is looking at hourly usage, and the software that we can look at that usage through, we can run a report that looks for continuous usage 24/7, typically for two or three days in a row. And if water's been running 24/7 for three days, then we have a suspicion that there might be a leak. Now, it could be a bona fide use, for instance, maybe one of the hotels or motels, there's going to be people up all night long flushing toilets and whatever they do. So, that's probably legitimate and wouldn't necessarily indicate a leak. However, if you've got a residence, and nobody's up, and no irrigation's running, and you see that, then it tells me maybe there's a toilet leaking, maybe there's a leak under your slab or under your foundation, or maybe in the backyard or front yard, your kids have let the faucet dripping out of sight, out of mind. And so we actually give notices and encourage them to call us if they can't find a leak, and then we'll give them some instructions on some other things they might do, and that's really taking strides towards helping us meet those demands. And the new thing that we're getting out of the new meters is, coming soon, hopefully to a home near you, is our online customer portal, where customers will be able to create an account with a password where only they can go into their information, and they can look at their historic usage. Now, our history in this case will be since the new smart meters were installed, that's the extent of our data collection, but as a year or two go by, they'll be able to look back and look at two to five years of historic usage on a weekly, monthly, or even hourly basis, so they can look for that same, you know, hey, well, are my sprinklers coming on in the middle of the night and I'm not aware of it? They can actually go in and look at their usage at 2:00 in the morning if they choose to. It's not available yet, we're kind of beta testing it as we speak, trying to make sure it's user-friendly for all of the various browsers that we're trying to access it, and then we'll be disseminating information with bills and things as to how customers can get an account and log in and look at their usage. So, next steps. We, based on the continued new 29% goal, and the fact that we're, you know, nip and tuck on being able to meet 32%, as your Public Works Director, I'd be recommending the city manager continue status quo on our current stage-three water warning level that's imposed. That would continue to limit watering to two days a week, and it would continue to prohibit washing of hardscapes, sidewalks, streets, driveways, and would limit how you wash vehicles and boats to automatic shut-off valves and use of buckets with no more than three minutes of rinsing. We would also, as we go into the current budget preparation cycle, we're working with Parks and other departments about some things we might be able to do, and we're looking at, if we can afford it, to possibly replace irrigation controllers, certainly at key parks, large users, but preferably citywide at all of our landscapes and park facilities, which will certainly help Parks Department. The current restriction is you can't water during or within 48 hours after a rainstorm. Right now, how many controllers do we have, Armando? 75-ish? A lot. Every single median has its own meter, and so we have to run out, I say we, Parks Recreation Staff, get to run out when rain's forecast and have to set to rain delay or off, you know, 50 to 75 controllers citywide. Takes them about a day and a half to do that, and then when the rain's passed and it warms up or we get a stretch and dry, have to run out, turn them all back on, and then the next time rain's forecast, have to run out and do it all over again. Well, there are smart meters, they're centrally dispatched using Wi-Fi or cellular technology where the city could put in these smart controllers that are either weather sensing or moisture sensing, that could automatically regulate water, and they can sense when it's raining, and do an automatic rain delay, or we could centrally, if we invest in the high-end version, we could actually, over Parks and Rec, sitting in their office, they could, they could send a message out to key parks or to all parks to either defer or delay or turn off watering for a specified period of time. So, we're thinking that would be probably pay for itself in labor costs as we go forward if the mandates are going to continue. We also take opportunities where we can to identify sprinkler heads that are broken or inefficient and upgrading. I think I'm hearing earlier, or seeing early signs of requesting some irrigation system upgrades to help be more efficient and eliminate leaks, and usually when we lose an irrigation system in a park, it's a major leak on miniature scale, what you see with a fire hydrant. So, we like to get those aging systems upgraded, and our facilities maintenance staff are, anytime that there's an obsolete, or a broken, or a vandalized fixture, whether it's in a park or a city building, when they get there, if it's really not repairable, or it's going to cost a significant amount of water, of money to repair or upgrade faucet sinks, toilets, the direction they've been given is if you're reaching that tip point of it's an old toilet and it's inefficient, is we're putting in new ultra-low-flow fixtures, and we're seeing some here in City Hall, got some at various facilities where it was time, and we're doing the same thing in the parks as need arises, so we were, would plan to continue doing that. Lastly, we've got a few issues on the horizon that I'm sure are near and dear to the council's heart, and the public, as they read in the newspapers and see what's going on, we've got several large development proposals on the edges of town that would be looking for either city service or possible annexation, and in addition to the Eastview Casino proposal, Wilton Rancheria, and San Joaquin Delta College proposals, that would all be tentatively planning to enter into agreements with the city for service. We also have approximately 800 residential infill units that are zoned and either have tentative maps or already have final maps that could be built on, and combined, that's quite a bit of potential growth over the next decade or two that the city could be looking at. And so the question then that comes to mind is, wow, where's all that water going to come from, and is our system capable of providing that? Just last council meeting, you awarded a contract for a consultant to begin the 2015 update to our urban water management plan. That's a state-required plan that was tied to the new general plan that was adopted, and every five years we have to update that plan to get a fresh 25-year outlook over the planned growth within the general plan, or new things such as rancherias and Delta colleges that might be on the horizon that weren't here five years ago. And so that plan assesses the system capabilities, looks at current and future demands, and then identifies the ability of the city's water system, either as is or with planned improvements, to sustainably meet that demand. And if you can't make that finding, then you have to start taking a look at restricting growth or finding new sources of water. So, our current plan, it was done several years ago, it's currently being updated shortly, did find that we had sufficient water, but that was really at the beginning of the five-year drought that we were looking, and so what's changed? Well, as we noted earlier, we do have some planned growth that wasn't on the horizon five years ago, but we certainly were looking ahead to the entire general plan concept and felt that it was, the aquifer was sustainable. What we're seeing is five years into a drought, we're not seeing a significant drawdown. That in large part is due to conservation efforts, but we also have noted that historically, the aquifer has shown some drawdown through two prior multi-year droughts since 1960, and in both times it's come back upon the arrival of wetter weather patterns, back to the level that it was before. Which sort of leads us to the final thing, is in 2014, the state adopted a group of bills that have come to be known as the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and if you're into acronyms, we engineers are calling that SIGMA, and it's going to require the formation of groundwater sustainability agencies covering each aquifer or sub-basin in the state. And then it's going to require that a groundwater sustainability plan be developed for those aquifers, and we're in a medium priority aquifer that is not considered critically overdrafted at this time by the state, and so that gives us till next June to identify who is going to be the groundwater sustainable agency administering groundwater, and it could be multiple agencies, and the city could be an agency covering its border, or we could partner with the county or some of these other groups that are listed up here to go in as a, and if you please, a joint venture where we might have an MOU or maybe even a formal agreement as to how we'd share costs of study. But at the end of the day, by 2022, we've got about five years to put together a sustainability plan that will define the sustainable yield for our aquifer, and then would limit new wells or new demands and growth if it came to that beyond that sustainable yield, so that we don't have continued subsidence problems as we're seeing in the South State, or get ourselves in a position where we've outgrown our capacity and then it's not sustainable. So, these are going to be important plans, and our expectation is that we're, we're meeting informally at a staff level with these agencies to see if there might be a partnership opportunity and a shared funding opportunity, and we'll be bringing back to your council for formal consideration what that might look like, what the options are, and what our recommendations would be. And with that... And with that, I would entertain any questions you might have.
Council questions?
No.
I do have one for you. I'm not going to jump out very easy. You mentioned on, I think it's the fourth page where it says water system status, that the drop in elevation on the aquifer is two feet in the past three years. Does that take into account the Golden Heights well as well?
Yes, for, it had been pumping for about six months prior to a failure that was subsequently rebuilt the well again as another brand-new installation, and it's been running for six months since. So, the 2015 usage and the final year, actually over a year and a half, it ran for cumulative, it's been running for about 12 months at that peak performance level. So, about 12 months of the three-year average would reflect the new deep well.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the report, sir. Moving on, public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers should restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
And we have Evan Watkins.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. How are you this evening? I'm a new resident to the beautiful town of Galt for a little over eight months now. What I'm bringing to the council is a safety issue, in my eyes. We've contacted Public Works by phone, left messages, contacted them by email with no response. That's what brings me here tonight, okay? I live at the corner of Lake Park, and forgive me if I'm pronouncing this wrong, Corrillian. What I have seen in the last eight months is traffic. I understand it's 45 miles an hour, that's not an issue with me. My concern is that there's no crosswalk at that intersection. I see children coming from school on their bikes, children walking, family members walking over to Rite Aid, the pizza parlor, and all those other things, okay? With no crosswalk. There is a crosswalk at Twin Cities, that's a stoplight, but on, I'm sorry, on the east side of Corrillian, there's that big vacant lot with no sidewalks. You got mud and everything else to walk to that crosswalk. If you don't want to walk in the mud, you're walking in the bike lane, which is in the road. And with vehicles going 45 miles an hour, that's not a good thing. I don't want my granddaughter to be walking over on the street, and this is a major concern for me because of safety. I understand at nighttime there's darkness and stuff. I'm not asking if the council would consider putting a light post up, I'm just asking for a simple white crosswalk. Because in the state of California, we all know it's illegal, and you have to stop for pedestrian in a crosswalk. So, at 45 miles an hour, even though they got a little distance before the stoplight, they're still doing 40, 45 miles an hour. If the crosswalk was there, I would be happy, because that intersection is used a lot by that whole community over there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You look like you were going to address that, Glenn.
Well, we would certainly have comments. A question, does this council want us to respond, or take it under advisement, or what's your pleasure?
Well, do you have? I have to take that under advisement. I cannot respond to the lack of communication back to Public Works, because I was unaware that you hadn't made phone calls, et cetera. That particular location has been brought to our attention, and we have evaluated. The city of Galt has a crosswalk guidelines for when crosswalks are installed at non-controlled or uncontrolled locations. An uncontrolled location is if the main, one of the roads doesn't have a stop sign or a traffic signal. For instance, Corrillian is not stopped, only the minor street is stopped. The actual guidelines were taken to the Safety Committee and were approved by the Safety Committee. That intersection was counted and evaluated to meet, to determine whether it meets our uncontrolled crosswalk guidelines, it does not because of the volume of traffic. My understanding, per the California Vehicle Codes, is that any intersection a pedestrian is allowed to cross, and the vehicle is supposed to yield to the pedestrian, even if there's no crosswalk at that location.
That's correct. Under California law, any extension of a sidewalk that ends at an intersection is a prima facie, if you prefer, crosswalk that can be sighted with or without stripes on the road. We do not recommend striping a crosswalk where there's not controlled traffic. In this case, putting a crosswalk across Corrillian without a four-way stop, we actually think would be a less safe condition, because kids are going to think, oh, I went to crosswalk, I can run out, when in reality, they should be waiting for an opportunity. If they do proceed, we don't, we are, our staff recommendation is not to put in crosswalks at uncontrolled intersections unless there's some additional consideration. Again, as Glenn mentioned, we have looked at this location, do not feel it's warranted at this time. You know, there's always a concern for safety. We have not had any record of accidents or reports of near misses. We've got intersections all over the city that would be very similar to this, and we don't recommend that we just run out and put in crosswalks at uncontrolled intersections. Studies have shown that if you mark a crosswalk, that pedestrians actually observe less cautious behavior and could actually increase the risk that somebody would be hit. They have a presumed false sense of security, and their behavior reflects that when you stripe a crosswalk at an uncontrolled intersection.
Can I make a comment on this? Okay, with that understanding, and forgive me, I don't know the name of the road, but the next intersection just south of Park Lake is not a four-way stop, not a four-way control, has less traffic crossing it, but it's got a wide crosswalk. Painting.
Is that not classified as a school crossing? That's a school crossing.
That is not a school crossing.
That's Lake Canyon.
Is it, okay, we have several, and I can't specifically speak to the location, because I don't exactly know which one it is. We do have several locations that we have yellow crosswalks at uncontrolled locations that are zebra crosswalks, and there are striped crosswalks. And basically, that is a path of travel for school, for schoolchildren back and forth. There are significant, if it's the one that I'm thinking of, and there's two that are striped yellow, there are significant amounts of pedestrians. They, I believe the schools also have crossing guards, or they have in the past, I don't know if they currently still do, and so there is significant pedestrian volume, and it is identified as a school crossing due to the location of the school and where the students are going, et cetera.
And I believe there's significant additional signage and reflectorization of that crosswalk.
And at that particular crosswalk too, we have a grant who say it costs $100,000 to do pedestrian improvements. That's one of the locations we're looking at, trying to do some pedestrian safety improvements. And then, there's three other locations on the east side in that general area we're also looking at.
And I don't want to cause an argument or any big thing. The crosswalk you're speaking at about is further south from the intersection I'm talking about. It's a white one, it's not a school marked zone, it's just a white crosswalk. And I notice less traffic going across there, because I do walk my dog around the area and stuff like that, other than mine. And I live right on the corner of Lake Park, so I'm out there doing yard work or whatever the case, I watch the traffic come by. All I'm saying is if Public Works could relook at that intersection or something to make it more safe, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Can we send it back to the Safety Committee, just to have my view of it again?
I'm trying to remember, is there a way for people that live in the neighborhood to walk to the, like, Rite Aid and to that area of the sidewalk?
On the east side of Corrillian, it's undeveloped, and so I don't know how much actual pavement shoulder you have or don't have, but if you want to cross at a controlled intersection, you have to go up to Twin Cities north and then cross at that location.
But there's no sidewalk.
There's no sidewalk on the east.
On either side, it gets to Twin Cities.
On the west side, it would be just developed.
Corrillian is quite wide, including a parking lane.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next, we have Kathleen Amos.
This is a follow-up to a few months ago, when I came to let you know that we were starting to do some planning about Memorial for Orville Fletcher, who passed away last year. I'm here to invite all of you to the dedication on April 11th this year at 12:30 PM, it'll be during the lunch hour, of the Galt High School Administration Building as the Orville K. Fletcher Administration Building. There will be a short program followed by light refreshments, and I will, there will be other published invitations in the Galt Herald and the Lorna Newt Sentinel between now and then, but I wanted to make sure that I came and personally invited everyone here, so, thank you, because Orville was on the council for a while, so that's part of what we'll be talking about that day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen. And that's all we have for public comment. Moving on to the information consent. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne and a second by Councilmember Campion. Do we have any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. You're going to add a vote. Okay, moving on to scheduled matters. Cedar Flats Estate Rezone and Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map Project. Mr. Stewart's not here, do we have someone who's?
I'll go ahead and take this one. Good evening, Chris Elias, Principal Planner with the city's Community Development Department. The item we have before you is the Cedar Flats Estates Rezone and Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map. If you recall, we met on this item at the February 16th City Council meeting, and at that time, you adopted the project's secret document and also introduced the first reading of the ordinance that approves the rezone from R1C to Cedar Flats Estates Plan Development. The council continued the public hearing on the vesting tentative map pending some revisions to the conditions of approval. You know, just a quick brief on the project. The project is subdividing 30 acres into 120 single-family lots. Lots range in size from 6,510 square feet to a little bit over 9,000 square feet. It's consolidating three approved maps, so this site is basically consolidating Ilania Estates, Four Seasons, and Village at Lexington Heights. Again, based on council's direction, we modified the conditions of approval, and they're shown as Exhibit B in the staff report, and the modifications are shown in red, so hopefully it'll be a little bit easier for you to identify. And not to minimize the changes, because they are important to have a clean document, but most do not impact the project or the developer much. They were really just clarifying, you know, some of the conditions a little bit more clearly. The most significant change is really the inclusion of Condition B44, which basically requires the applicant to pay fees that are in effect at the time they fill permits, not the fees that are in effect at the time the vesting map was approved. So, that is a significant change. Since this staff report had gone out, we actually have a couple other changes, and I've given you a revised, revised conditions of approval at the start of the meeting, and in that, the earlier revision was in red, but the new revisions are shown in blue. So, we revised B44 to include that the applicant agrees to pay all fees, taxes, and/or assessments. And then, B45 was added to the conditions, basically to require the applicant to pay, you know, that we actually should comply with all ordinances, rules and regulations at the time, they're applicable, not at the time the vesting map was approved. So, those were most recent changes, and those were given to you at the start of the meeting. So, the city council was asked to reopen the public hearing regarding the vesting tentative subdivision map, and then consider the resolution approving the vesting, or consider the ordinance approving the rezone. And that concludes staff's brief presentation, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions from the council?
Very much agree with you on that.
I think we did. Okay, with that then, if I understand correctly, we have to reopen public?
Yes, please.
Okay. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. Have any speakers on this? Seeing none, we will close it. Evan, motion to adopt the resolution approving?
I move.
Motion by Councilmember Powers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer.
Before we call, just to clarify that, as with the amendments that were passed out this evening on B44 and B45.
Okay. Works for me.
And those were the conditions that the applicant agreed to verbally at the last meeting?
That's correct. I think in particular on B45, which says that the applicant understands and agrees, I think the statement that the applicant made the last meeting was that this would give him some motivation to move forward on his project expeditiously.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. You're going to add a vote. All right. Moving on to Public Works. Sacramento Transportation Authority Designation of Priority Transportation Projects.
Good evening. This is a continuation of an informational item from last meeting, and you had requested that it be brought back with some further analysis and documentation as to the selection of a designation of a priority project, or priority transportation project for insertion in an education piece in a mayor that would be Galt-centric for our area, that would become part of an education piece relative to the possible extension or placement on the ballot of a measure for an additional half-cent transportation sales tax. And we've given you a staff report that outlines some of those and some alternatives on Page 3 of your staff report for your consideration, and Glenn's going to give you a quick overview of some of the considerations that are outlined, and then we look for your direction.
Okay, so, staff was asked to provide pros and cons of transportation projects for council to consider, so that they can designate either a single transportation project or multiple transportation projects as priority for STA's Measure Next. Okay, so, really quickly, Measure A was on the ballot on 2004 for Sacramento County. It's a half-cent sales tax. It passed with 75% voter in favor, took effect in 2009, and it's sunset in 2039. Measure B, or Measure A Next, is proposing a additional half-cent sales tax. It's proposed to be on the ballot in 2016, November 2016. They have fixer-roads first, so in $20,000, Measure A, or excuse me, Measure B is projected to provide approximately $22 million for road maintenance slash rehab, and $11 million for capital projects. These are estimates that were provided by the STA's consultants to the city in 2013 and are only estimates. Okay, so, staff initially identified the Walnut Interchange as Galt's priority project. The reason why this was identified was it was needed for the industrial area west of 99 to develop. It provides relief to the Twin Cities interchange, basically extends it to life beyond the 10-year planned life of the roundabouts. It's in the current TCIP, which is the Traffic Capital Improvement Program. The actual improvement is not fully funded by developer fees. interchange to mitigate identified traffic impacts through the payment of the impact fee. Other potential interchanges, such as Twin Cities and Summerhorn, were not, were deemed to be less essential in the near-term growth. And it provided citywide benefit, provided citywide benefit via transportation. So let me just talk first about the TCIP. Okay, so the TCIP, the previous TCIP assumed a build-out of the general plan land use. Since it assumed the build-out of the general plan land use, it required a build-out of the transportation network to mitigate the land use's impacts. So basically, the impact fees were higher. The city was looking at trying to get our impact fees more in line with other agencies' impact fees. So basically, what we did is we developed a 20-year land use projection. That actual land use projection was developed by Goodwin, and they used market absorption, market absorption projections. And they also provided consultation to the planning staff with regards to what projects are in the pipeline, approved, and what's also planned. Okay, so with staff's input, OmniMeans, who's the transportation consultant, placed basically the 20-year growth. And that's what you'll see over here, and you'll also see, there should be a color copy of the graphics in your staff report. So basically then, from there, utilizing the city's travel demand forecasting model, what OmniMeans did was, based upon the 20-year land use, they projected what traffic impacts would, would be a result of that land use. So basically, the TCIP network that's shown behind me, everything that's in red or circled are actually the improvements that were included in the TCIP. So, just want to talk a little bit of some projects. Okay, so these projects came from the general plan. They're clearly not all included, are all, all inclusive of the projects that are identified in the, in the general plan, but we picked top ones that we thought could be of regional significance. So basically, the Carillion and the Morango Extension, they're both in the TCIP, and they both provoke connectivity to the Central Gulf Interchange. So basically, they provide the northeast area connectivity to the Central Gulf Interchange. The con for the, for both of those projects is that they only benefit the east side of Gulf. Next one is the Twin Cities Widening. It's in the TCIP, but, you know, the con is it only benefits the east side. The next one was Twin Cities, which was brought up the last time we were here. It provides capacity for the future commercial to the north of Twin Cities. It only really benefits the north area of the, of the city, and it's not in the TCIP. Then there's the Walnut Interchange, which is in the TCIB, TCIP. It provides capacity for the future industrial area. It increases connectivity east and west, because you would have another connection from east to west over State Route 99. And it provides a citywide circulation. So those are the reasons why staff came up with the Walnut Interchange, or, excuse me, those are the pros and cons, and those are a little bit about why we came up with the Walnut Interchange. So just before we move on, there's a couple items that I just want to point out to make very obvious. Okay, so in the TCIP, it doesn't fully fund the Walnut Interchange via developer impact fees. The interchange, that interchange would rely on outside funding, such as the Central Gulf Interchange did. So at Central Gulf Interchange, we had Measure A, and we had different federal types of funds that were in the project from, all the way from design and environmental through construction. Twin Cities Interchange is not identified in the TCIP. So if we were to put it as a priority project, we would have to look to see how we would fund the rest of the Twin Cities Interchange. If the TCIP were to be updated and the Walnut Interchange was to be removed, the circulation section, besides the TCIB, TCIP having to go through that process, the circulation section of the Eastview's EIR would have to be re-analyzed, and it may require it to be recirculated or at least to hold a public meeting. So with that, I am available for questions, and we're here to get council's feedback as to what priority project, or projects for the STA advertisements.
Okay. Council, questions?
On the, on the Twin Cities Interchange, why was that removed from the TCIP?
Basically, what we did is, it goes back to the land use, okay? So we have the 20-year land use that was, came up with, with staff and projections from Goodwin Associates, that they, they evaluated other, they evaluated what State Cos projections were, Department of Finance, et cetera. From there, what they did was, then they ran their model, the travel demand forecasting model, to identify where traffic impacts are created, and then, and developed what, at the locations of the impacts, developed what roadway improvements or transportation improvements would mitigate those impacts. So what happens is, when you put in the Walnut Interchange, there is traffic that would use the Walnut Interchange right now, if it was available, that's forced to go up to Twin Cities. Because if I'm on the east side of 99 and I want to go south and I buy walnut, I either have to go to the north or south. I can't necessarily use walnut. And so what happens is, there is traffic right now in that vicinity, and will be in the future, that would use the Walnut Interchange as opposed to Twin Cities. So when you put in the Walnut Interchange, what it does is it draws traffic, some traffic away from Twin Cities.
And you occurred to further answer your question, which was, why wouldn't it show up in our TCIP as a 20-year project? Is, based on those assumed growth patterns and the recent $4 million of improvements that were done, it was projected that we would still have functional capacity and ability to serve based on that assumed growth. Now, if you assume a different growth pattern, then you get different model results.
Right. So by, by improving the Walnut, the Walnut Interchange, how, how much useful life does that add to the Twin Cities?
We didn't do a sensitivity analysis to that with regards to how much more capacity, you would have to look at, number one, how much more capacity was added, or how much more, not added, but how much more, how much capacity was taken away from Twin Cities and put at Walnut? And how much land use would it take to use that capacity? And where do we think that land use would be? So there's a lot of steps associated with doing sensitivity analysis. I mean, we could say, we could come up, you know, with a little bit of work, this is how much capacity is drawn from Twin Cities to Walnut. But when you say, how many more years of useful life, then you get into projections of where additional land use is, you know, how fast it will develop, et cetera, and that gets a little bit more complicated.
Exactly. And I guess that was one of the concerns I had, is that you look at Twin Cities Road, which is actually State Route 104. And, and you know, there are a lot of users of that interchange that don't reside in Gulf. They're not commuter traffic. They're, you know, exterior trips. So that is a concern to the extent that was that evaluated? And, and what effect, you know, what, you know, in the next 20 years, how would that affect that interchange? I mean, I, I don't know.
So, okay, so, not to give you a modeling 101 class, but basically, when you have a travel demand forecasting model, you have your areas, then you have your surrounding areas. And so besides it having a, what the projections of specifically of your areas, typically what ends up happening is there's projections by your COGS, let's say COGS, of what the growth is around you. And then you make assumptions as your agency of how you're going to grow and what you're going to grow. And then the land use around you, you just assume is what's projected by your COGS. So they, when you have the model, it identifies where you're located and where you want to go, and basically doesn't make you reroute into a totally circuitous route. It knows your origin and your destination. It's a very complex computer model, so...
The sake, we did rely on, our consultant did use the Seacoast model to get those regional inputs of how much traffic's on 99, how much is currently on 104, how much would we expect to grow to the east of us and to the west of us?
Okay.
It's projections.
And such as projections, you know, we project the land use, and then the land use, basically, we use that to project, not project, but estimate where people are going to go and how they're going to go there.
Can we go back to the, was it the figure three? Because I, I think it's the, that one, because that one. That all shows up black in our packet, so you can't, what are...
No, that's the...
You should have this in the handout you got just at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, excuse me.
And for council, while you're turning to it, the assumption was that anything that's colored or has the orange or yellow circle on it is new growth that was planned as part of our recent TCIP update. That was the, those are the assumptions that were made with the input that we received.
Okay.
So just to talk a little bit about the land use, basically what planning provided us was estimates of what would projections between now and 2019 based upon what's approved and what's in the strike. And then from there, Goodwin looked at comparisons of Seacoast projections, Department of Finances, and then from 2019 to our 20-year time period, basically what they did was they looked at what the other, other agencies had done, and they kind of went from 2019 to 2035 to come up with an estimate. And then even from there, the city added some more, a little bit more land use to that.
On the, on the fees that are currently collected for Walnut Avenue under the local impact fees?
Mm-hmm.
Have, are you using this number that you showed up here, 46 million?
Um, okay, so...
Is that the number that's in the TCIP, that?
It, it's actually a compilation of several numbers. So that number that's up there is, sorry, it's actually the interchange plus there are realignments of West Stockton. So it includes all of that in that cost, and those are all in the TCIP.
And that's this 46...
Correct.
Okay. And that's currently leveled, levied now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And the reason that you don't fully recover, say, well, new development's going to trigger that, well, there's a lot of existing traffic that we can't, the burden of existing demand on the developers. So that's sort of the city's existing share, so the model discounts for existing traffic demands and looks at new traffic demands as a percentage of the cost of, of building the interchange. They pay their fair share through fees.
What's the fair share estimate for the city's contribution under the fee program, you know?
We currently have, it's, it's $18 million that are unfunded.
Okay. Unfunded.
Unfunded.
And the balance would be through the fee program?
Balance is funded.
Okay. 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 Well, I appreciate the information. I feel much better.
Yeah, me too.
So we, status quo, absent any concerns, would be that we would let the brochure go as, as proposed, or if you'd like to direct on different priority, or even the addition of multiple priorities, but there is finite funding available, and if you take it from one, you put it on another.
Let me ask you a question. If you did add another project, and obviously the, whatever the number of projects are, that exceeded whatever the fund amount is from STA, would that give the city an opportunity in the future to make decisions as to how specifically those funds would be spent?
So what happens is, okay, so not all of our Measure A funds, we have a card out for Central Gulf Interchange.
Correct.
Okay? And then from all the other Measure A, we actually can use wherever we want. I don't think they're going to actually identify a certain amount, because my understanding is when it was on the ballot last time for the Central Gulf Interchange, it was a specific amount that was for that project.
That project.
So it doesn't mean that we can't use Measure A towards other projects. So like, for instance, for the roundabouts, we did use Measure A. We have a bunch of grant-funded projects that are, you know, going to be coming up next, next summer, summer of 2017. Those have Measure As that are used for match, et cetera. So it doesn't preclude us from using it for other projects. If you want to identify another project, the only concern would be your deliverability.
I'd further add to your, I think what your question is, is if we pick Walnut or something different now as a priority, does that limit our future options?
Correct.
And the answer is, we don't believe so. We haven't seen, they haven't yet drafted what the measure language would be. But our understanding is that for local projects, they would not be carved out and set as saying, if you pass this, we will build these things for these amounts of money, as they did with the former Measure A.
Okay.
I believe, with the exception of a couple of regional projects, such as the Southeast Connector and Light Rail Extension to the airport, a couple of flagship regional projects that would be carve-outs, that the rest would be up to agency discretion. I believe the current, current proposal would be for 60% funding going to fix it first, maintenance of existing roads, and that the 40, other 40% of an agency's share would go to capital projects to be determined by the project proponent, or the city in this case. And we have the ability to, if we keep our roads at a certain level, that some of that maintenance money could be put into future capital if we were, if our roads met a certain pavement condition index, and so there'd still be local discretion. The only concern would be is if you go out with education pieces and voters rely on that, and then you don't deliver that, then it's, you know, it's sort of integrity with the voters as to, did we do what we said we would do?
You know, it's unfortunate that, you know, more of this type of information isn't in that pamphlet, because I think there will be, or could be some voter confusion as to, well, there's nothing at Walnut Avenue, and there's, what's really the driving force? Because the driving force isn't identified in the voter pamphlets that's to be mailed out. And I think that, you know, the layperson may look at it and say, well, I think that's the wrong location. I, you know, I disagree. And that's, that's the only concern that I have with what, the way, at least the way it's laid out today.
It is intended to be informational, not a sales pitch, and it is, would be the first of more planned and, and community workshops and different things that would put, help spell that out for the public.
That's all I have.
Okay, with consensus, so you leave it as is?
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Yeah.
Doing it, just need general consensus? Steve?
Yeah.
Just need consensus?
Yep.
Okay, we'll leave it as is.
Thank you. We'll advise them to proceed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Gwen. Yeah, thanks, Glenn.
Wow, moving on. City clerk report?
I just have one item tonight. We had a resignation on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Bill Parkin has stepped down. And so Mayor Cruz is looking for another Parks and Recreation Commission member.
Those applications in?
Uh, Bill Parkin.
Bill Parkin. Okay, comments by staff. We'll start down here. Amy?
I don't really have any comments for you this evening. I could say thank you for bringing me on board and already enjoying and experiencing them. Glad to have you.
Steve?
Well, I've spoken more than my share tonight, but as you might have seen, if you're out and about town, UPRR is just ahead of schedule. We weren't expecting them for another couple of weeks, based on last Friday's weekly. Apparently, they had a shortage on rail tie deliveries to the south of us. They're actually doing this project, is going from Tracy all the way to Sacramento with their mainline rehab, putting in new rail ties, new ballast supplements, and then they'll come back in behind this that you're seeing going on in our community with replacement of all the crossing panels at five of our crossings, which would be the same five crossings as our soon-to-be-quiet zone. And so we'll be keeping you advised to the best we can as to the moving target for schedule. When we get to the actual roadway crossings, there'll be road closures, typically three or four days each, depending on whether it's double track or single track, and that'll be to completely remove the crossing, remove the ballast, resurface the tracks, and put them back. And then city forces would be repaving the transitions to those new tracks. But when we're done, we should have some brand-new rail crossings again.
Awesome. Glenn?
Chris?
Phil?
Excuse me. The Harvey Park restroom should be set tomorrow.
Awesome.
In, in time for, and the pavement, concrete work around it in time of the baseball opener this Saturday.
That'll make them very happy. Paula? Armando? You don't look like Chief German.
We deferred all our time into a...
That will make them very happy. Paula? Armando? You don't look like Chief Drummond.
We deferred all our time, Mr. Lincoln.
No respect, right? Eugene?
Nothing to say to you, man.
All right, Steve?
Thank you.
We'll move up to council. We'll keep it rolling. Kurt?
Nothing.
Mary Lou?
Nothing.
All right. Barbara?
Well, yeah, the, it ended coming up on the 19th, I'm getting a little nervous with the weather report that we're going to be taking this cross. And I have to say, I was excited because it happened, delivered, it's like a package ready to be set down, and I'm not encouraged enough to press a sticker. I really appreciate it. And also, I'm really excited to be a member of the council meeting for Measure R, we're showing up, it takes some reflection for the report, and I appreciate all your support.
Here you go, Bill. I just have one thing to bring up. Saturday night, I had the honor and privilege of speaking at an Eagle Scout ceremony for one of our local young men, Zachary McCoy, and it was very enjoyable. To those of you who have been in scouting, and those who have obtained the position of Eagle Scout, you do know what that means, and he's, it's well-deserved, this young man. His project dealt with the flagpoles out at the McFarland Ranch, and they finished it up with the brick, and they did a lot of good work with steel as well, so I say thank you to him and all who worked on it. And with that?
Wait, I forgot something, I'm just sorry.
Jump in there.
Can we bring up some distribution of discretionary funds at the next council meeting? Please? How it's really been to do?
Yeah, I know. I was going to ask the same.
Okay.
So, if you can, you can take it from both of us. I'm sorry, I'm glad you brought that up.
Okay.
With that, this morning's turn.